And I just want to start. Okay.
Recording in progress.
Okay, outside. Shall we rise for the pledge this morning, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Monday, January tenth. We have minutes of our meeting held on Monday, January third. Could I have a motion to accept those minutes?
I'll move them.
No, I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We're going to start our meeting with a public hearing in accordance with RSA thirty-three colon eight dash A. The purpose of the public hearing is to take comment on the proposed municipal bond issue slash note in the amount of two million, five hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred dollars for the purpose of constructing an iron and manganese treatment plan. The town of Belmont is anticipated to receive a grant from the D E S, appropriation of American Rescue Plan Act twenty-twenty-one, funds in the amount of six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred. The total cost of the project is anticipated to be three million, one hundred and ninety-two thousand. We will open it for any public comment.
Yes, and if I could just add some additional information for you, and I did give you a copy of it in your packets today. I gave you the proposed bond schedule again. Obviously, it's very, it's an estimate at this time because the banks can't give us an actual, you know, confirmed rate. But Northway Bank did say that they could estimate that obviously if the debt were issued at this point, it would be about two point five-five percent interest rate on that particular note. I did give you a copy of the proposed drinking water rules related to manganese. One of the things that has been, has actually happened as of January first, twenty-twenty-one, was that the manganese level was lowered from point eight-four milligrams to point three-oh, and the state of New Hampshire is proposing to adopt that revision as well as the revision to require public notification for anything greater than point one mg. So that those are all changes that we would be subject to. I did give you a copy of the results that I had received from Panachuk for iron and manganese for the past, I think it went back to two thousand seventeen, so it would be five years' worth of results. As you can see in the beginning, the first couple of years, we would have exceeded those limits. But I do know, and Craig is on, so he can certainly add to the conversation, that they have been working very hard in the water system to exercise the other wells so as to help drive down the level of iron and manganese in the, in the system. But as it stands, the most recent results, we would, we have come close on a couple of occasions where we would have had to have given public, public notice of the exceedance of the levels. But that right now, we appear to be doing okay. But with these new standards, the risk is that much greater that we would have to provide, you know, public notification. There is some risk, they say, to young infants, newborn infants, if the manganese levels exceed the point one milliliters.
Craig, if we have a dry season, you know, I mean, I know we're pulling from the aquifer, but if you have a dry season, are you more apt to have a higher manganese because you might be drawing from further away?
Um, can you guys hear me?
Yep, we can.
Um, so in the past, we have had some dry spells. It's really pleasant, effective.
Okay.
You want to talk a little bit? We have a bit of supply. I mean, it's probably, if it's going, tell me the number of that.
Okay. All right. Okay.
That, that last, that last part, I don't know, it's on the floor. We're not going to need all this.
Okay. I know I heard last week that PFOs, PFOs.
P fats.
P fats, which, we don't have an issue with that at this, right?
We have not yet.
We have not yet. That is my understanding that the federal government is going to lower the standard to zero in the, it could be next year. So you just worry about what is the federal government going to do with the manganese down the road? It's something I haven't heard.
Well, that's, that's what we're doing.
That's why we're doing this, because of.
When the state goes on to start a building now, rather than seeing more than half of our population, we're going to do a project, do something to do.
Yep.
And this is then, when you look at all of them, that's new grant. It's all on that group and, you know, is that, are we going to do something or are we going to do something?
Right, so in other words, what's, what's happening with this is, a few years ago when we had the grant and it was voted down, and I think I even said, one of these days, we're gonna, it's gonna change. That day is coming sooner than what I even thought it would.
I believe I said within five years, I need to know that, you know, California, you know, states were looking into manganese, being, you know, being initially, we're going to try with the elements and stuff like that, and now, they're not, they've not been able to follow that. I think that within five years, they're going to see something at the end of the year.
And the scary, and the scary part with this is anyone who has children in preschool, in the, I believe that's at the elementary school. Am I correct that preschool is at the elementary school? They're drinking this water. Okay, I think it's important that.
And it's like you said, just to make it clear, when we do have to be public location,
Yep.
then it's what it's about, what we're doing. You know, no one can say that we're not doing that.
Sure, sure.
We're trying to, you know, trying to solve this problem before we're into it. And often, when it's written, you know, we're ready to do it. The path to something else, to start it, is, we're not going to be able to, we need to.
Face with this. Well, I think it's important that the taxpayers understand that even if they're not on town water, if you have children going to school, if you, if you go to any of your restaurants, any of your businesses that are on town water, it does affect you. And I think it also in the long run affects the value of our town if we don't have the proper clean drinking water.
Well, most of, and, you know, you think that before they do this, and you say the loss is solid obvious, there's no way with the water, the water business that they would do, um, working that financial impact.
Sure.
It's just, it's, you know, it is, it's our schools, it's our infrastructure, it's our town, it's our facilities. Yeah, it's, it's not going to work.
Yep, all right.
And we have, as of last Friday, submitted a grant application for assistance in planning for this plant.
Aye.
So that we would, we've asked for fifty thousand dollars, which would be a full grant amount from the, the New Hampshire D E S and ARPA. So that application went in on Friday as well.
So that's to help with the engineering?
That would help with the engineering and planning for the treatment facility and so forth.
So it's not for lack of us trying to do our part?
Obtain as much money as we possibly can. Again, we're, you know, we're anticipated to receive a grant in the amount of six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars towards the cost of the project. Obviously, some difference than what we were given the initial, the first time around.
But it also doesn't prevent us from applying for more monies that comes available under ARPA.
We're going to apply for, correct?
And this money has to be used by?
Twenty-twenty-six.
All right, so we have some time to apply for other grants.
Yep.
All right.
The pushback, I think, from the public, if you have a well and you got manganese or high iron, you pay for your own water cleaning system. I mean, you put a filter system in or you put a recycling system in to, in to clean it up. And I think the pushback from the public that aren't on this is where this is going to come because this is quite a lot of sum of money. And what would this, is there a projected cost after this plant or this assembly of this machine, if you would?
To run it?
To run it and maintain it, that what's that going to do? Is there maintenance, do they calculate that in? So what, that's got to go to, someone's got to go to the water users, I mean.
Right, oh, absolutely. I mean, the, the, the operation of the plant, the staffing for the plant, all of that would be. Funded by the water users. The question is whether or not the bond to construct, construct the plant would be borne by the taxpayers as, as a whole. Because to put this burden on the, the water users is going to raise the rates. I, I don't have an estimate, but it would be extreme. Craig, I don't, I could not locate the information from the last time that we went through this as to the approximate cost to operate the plant. Do you by any chance have that? Or I will, I, I can certainly get that and make sure that everyone has that before the deliberative session.
I, I mostly do it in water, I don't want to tell you, I don't have a lot.
Okay, all right. I will have to get that for you and make sure that we have that before the deliberative session so that you have that information.
Any other comments from the public?
It's from me.
Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. And, um, obviously move on to the next one, right?
Yes, please.
All right, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
No, we can't.
The next one is scheduled for ten-thirty. So let's actually move on to some of your other business.
All right.
And we can take that information up if we could. So in your packets, you have letters from K R T appraisal. One was done in October of twenty nineteen when we were initially proposing the cost of the annual update to our assessment records. And we had planned on going forward with that. However, based on the vote at town meeting, they didn't appropriate any money to the capital reserve fund, so we didn't have sufficient enough monies to, to go forward with that. I asked them last week if they would update their cost for that project. As you can see, it's a minimal difference between what was originally proposed and what is being proposed going forward. If we were to start the update in twenty-twenty-two, the cost would be thirty-four thousand dollars for each year, twenty-two, twenty-three. And then to bring everything current in twenty-four, which would meet the requirements of the state law for revaluation, it would be seventy thousand. So we are putting forth a warrant article this year for seventy-five thousand to go into capital reserve for that purpose, to hopefully be able to do an update this year. Alicia can share with you the sales that she has seen. Where, I'm not sure, do you have an estimate what our ratio may be coming in at? Not yet.
They haven't even looked at.
They haven't?
It's been for a while, for a month.
I expect our ratio is going to drop considerably. I expect it to be in the low eighties.
K R T said that they expect it to be low, too, very low.
Yeah, yeah, because sale prices are just way above what we currently have prices our properties assessed for.
The numbers you just gave us, Jean, you mentioned thirty-four thousand. My paper says thirty-two thousand.
That should be the October third, two thousand nineteen. You should have had two letters in that packet. Nope, they were photocopied together, did they get? Did you have two, Sunny?
I have two.
Yeah?
Okay.
Oh, did you find it? Okay. No?
Okay, yeah, because my, everything was off, like, even this, I have sixty-five. Okay.
All right. It was just an update, I guess. And again, the reason for doing this is obviously all these people that have done a lot of upgrades and.
A lot of changes, upgrades, but they've also purchased homes for,
Right.
you know, far more than what they're currently being assessed for. And we can't just go in and selectively spot, update them. We have to update, you know, the town as a whole.
Some people haven't even done updates and have just sold their houses for far more than.
Right, and what this is going to do, instead of waiting to be able to get the proper taxes from these sales and these changes to twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, probably, right? Before it would come out?
Uh, no, the twenty-twenty-four update would be for the September first, twenty-twenty-four tax bills.
Right. This, obviously, the town is losing tax money and a lot of people are getting what I might call kind of free rides, so to speak. But then again, it would help some people who felt they were high. Maybe it's going to bring them more in line. Instead of having these big swings once every five years, you'll have little adjustments, boom, 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 throughout by doing this. I think that needs to be explained. I think that people don't understand that that's gonna, instead of getting the big, it's going to be smaller, up or down, we don't know that often.
And K R T has been monitoring the sales closely and have been watching, you know, they go into the system and monitoring, you know, the sales and so forth. And they're, you know, well aware of where we are with, with the ratio. This project does not include measure and listing.
No, no.
It includes actually going in, viewing the deeds that, of the transfer, viewing what's on the property record card, and then doing a statistical update of values based on that information.
Okay.
I think we just had a, a recent subgrant, so I think it was a newer construction build, but we only have it valued, assessed at five hundred thousand. It just sold for two point two million dollars. I think it's the highest house sale I've seen since I've been here in Belmont. And I thought, you know, every time I see a big one that tells Jean, I'm like, oh, my God, you know, one point this and this, I'm like, two point two, holy, holy.
Yeah, wow. But it's assessed at five hundred thousand?
The Dog Trap was bought for me and two. I don't know what the assessment is on the Dog Trap, but it was eight, seventeen-nine for it.
I haven't seen that come through yet. They must have not registered it yet.
They had a delay like everybody else. Everybody's closings lately, it seemed to be.
So it's assessed at what?
I don't know what it's assessed for now, but I'm saying they just sold it for seventeen, almost eighteen million dollars.
Eighteen million, wow, wow. And again, it would help to keep things, yeah, all right, okay.
I realize the sales price doesn't mean that that's what it's worth.
No.
It's got, it does got, it's got to have some figure calculated in there.
Of course, of course. All right. Hurricane Road landfill site.
I was just going to quickly look up pots just for the sake of looking it up because I'm curious myself what they're selling it for. Come on, come on. Okay, so the primary piece of property is, oh, my God. It's just at one million, nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars and it sold for seventeen million. Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
Wow, wow.
We're, we're losing out.
I was pretty close, but no.
Wow, that's crazy.
We're, we're losing out as, as taxpayers.
Oh, my God, huge. In that assessment, oh, my God, that's, that's crazy.
That's why it's so important that this pass because.
Yep.
We're losing out for, till what, twenty, twenty-four?
Yeah, we would continue going until twenty-four if we don't do this update in twenty-two.
If we don't do the update, then it stays at the one point, whatever.
Correct.
That alone, that alone tells you, it means that, that'll pay for, that'll pay for the, the expense of the upgrade.
Wow.
Yeah. I don't know how many, how much in depth they look at, like the M S L or the listings, but even when I do my check and I see, like, say, an, an older home that, you know, clearly hasn't been updated or our assessment doesn't really reflect maybe an update, but when I go and look and to verify it's a valid sale and I see that it's a total renovation and total, you know, and but we're not picking that up in the assessment either because they haven't been let in or maybe someone didn't pull a building permit, I'll put, you know, complete update per M S L, very high-end or, you know, you can clearly tell in the pictures.
Yeah, that it's been.
You know, and we have it assessed for, say, a hundred and they just sold it for four, five hundred thousand.
Yeah.
I, I guess my point was, I don't know how far they actually go to look and see, you know, interior updates and this and that.
Well, I guess my other question is, is if, and again, not everybody, everybody does general improvements in their house, but if you're doing a major, you probably have to get some permits because you've got to do electrical or whatever, that you would have a record of that to know that it was a little bit more involved than just painting and wallpaper or whatever they're doing. Yeah. Yeah.
So we will put together information to stress the importance of that warrant article passing and hope that that can move forward. I think that we can highlight a sale such as that as a prime example of, you know, a serious issue. Exactly, yeah.
You know, when they said this was going to sell, they called, they owe almost three hundred thousand dollars in back taxes.
Yeah.
That'll get paid.
Yeah.
So the next item on your agenda is the potential use of the Hurricane Road landfill site for a solar farm. Whereas we would have many, many solar panels that would assist in providing electricity to our municipal facilities. In the very preliminary stages of discussing this with this particular company, they've actually worked with a number of cities and towns in the area. They've been working with the city of Franklin. I know that the city of Laconia is also getting ready to do a similar project. And I had checked with the land use office. I mean, there's no restrictions on this parcel. I checked with our environmental engineering company as far as whether there were any restrictions on it, its use for that purpose, there are not. The main thing would be having the company come out and take a look at the parcel to see if it is situated in the proper, you know, proper location and so forth. I have gathered together all of the electrical usage for all of our town buildings and I've also reached out to Michael Tersey with the school district. And Debbie had done a similar project for the town of Canterbury, so she had all of that electrical usage data and she has sent that to me, so I would send that along to revision as well. But the purpose for it being on the agenda today is, is there an interest from you as a board to go forward with at least exploring this as a potential project for saving money for our municipal electricity usage? I believe that what we would be looking at would be a power purchase agreement with a third party and we would lease the land for this purpose. We would not be investing town money to construct the project. We would be looking at someone else to come in and construct the project, but yet we would benefit from it as well.
And obviously, the landfill, I, I understand that that's being, that's been pretty well receptive, accepted in other areas that there's no other use for the landfill.
Right.
That, that can be, it can be used for anything else, but they're allowing them to put solar panels on it.
This particular company has actually done several projects in other states, Maine being one of them, on similar type things, closed landfills because they really have no other usage for them. The one question that they were inquiring about was the amount of wetlands on the property, so another reason for them coming out and really viewing the property to see if it's a worthwhile project for that location.
Do we know how much of that property was, I guess, for lack of knowing, reclaimed?
Well, the entire parcel.
Where the bright green is.
Yeah, the bright green is where the, the landfill was, so there's very little, yeah.
That's where it's been bad.
And the parcel itself was a hundred and fourteen acres.
So, um, this connects to the highway garage?
Uh, the parcel butts the highway garage, yep.
Which is a good thing for, all right. Is, and is there three-phase power?
I don't know that. Again, that would be something that revision will need to come out and they had indicated that if I got the data back to them within the next week or so, they would try to come out at the end of January to view the parcel and, and so forth and give us some general idea.
Craig, you don't have three-phase power at the shop? No. No, okay, all right. Interesting.
What do they figure to look into this for cost for us to put up money to?
We don't put up anything.
My, the intent would be for us not to put up money for this. It would be to lease the property and we would gain not only that lease monies, but the lower electricity costs.
They, they own what they put on it, you just leave the loan. Or at least that's my understanding, yeah. And obviously, I think it's a great use of that land because it's, there's not much else you can do with it. And if we can benefit from it, I'm all for that. And we know, again, I think twenty-twenty-two is a push for renewable energy. So I, I, I don't have a problem with it. John?
Not at all.
Sunny?
How many acres is in that?
The total parcel is a hundred and fourteen acres.
But how many is the landfill?
I don't know, I'd have to have Rick scale it off for me. I mean, if you look at it in the picture that's on the left, it, it's certainly not a very big, big space. The highway parcel is about five acres, so it's going to be five or six, I would think.
Yeah.
And it's pretty wet behind it, so they probably.
So it may not be an optimum, you know, site, but I think it's worth having them come out, take a look at it.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, I really do.
Do we have any other sites that the town owns in town?
Not of that size, really. We have parcels out on Woodland Drive, but again, they're even more remote. This one is.
Man of property used, own Higgins Drive, the first lot up on the hill.
That would be.
He's, he's looking to put solar in it.
I think that would be, because that's all ledge.
Yeah, well, he's going to cut the ledge out first.
Oh, okay. Lower it up. Watch out.
Um, so we're trying to locate a place here. I don't know.
Rick, how do you?
The one would be at the top of there, or how would, you know, go up there?
And you know, that's an interesting question, Craig, because I know, one of the last times I went up eighty-nine into Vermont, you go up eighty-nine and it's like on both sides of eighty-nine are solar, they look like they were old pastures and now they're all solar fields, all right? And you can see the stuff has grown up, but that would be part of the, I would think.
The developers, right.
The solar people's obligations as to, we'll, we'll just need to remember to ask that question, that that is one of our requirements. We can't be the first one that they've run into that. And I would think they would want to keep it under control because otherwise, the bushes and stuff will be growing up between the panels. I would think.
I, I don't think, no, it's not going to be, it probably, it probably won't be needing to build it. It's, it's all going to break or, I expect it's going to break.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah.
Well, I know that Stone Cypher and Clark, which is the environmental company that we work with, they do our annual report each year for the landfill and I did ask them about the potential use and they certainly saw no.
Issues with it.
Issues with it.
It's, it's worth looking into.
Yep, yep. So we had been talking quite a bit this fall about the fact that we were going to be putting out an R F P for solid waste collection with the city of Laconia. Our existing contract with Casella expires December twenty-second, I mean, December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. The intent of the proposal was for a new contract that would begin as of January twen, January first, twenty-twenty-three, and it would be for automated collection. So what that would do is every household would receive a cart for trash, every household. So what that would do is every household would receive a cart for trash, every household would receive a cart for recycling. Um, because the, um, ongoing costs of labor are excessive for these firms to continue doing trash collection in the same manner that they have been doing it. We've had our existing contract with Casella for collection and disposal, um, for eight years now. The cost of disposal, um, that was proposed to us as part of this prod- as part of this bid, um, we are currently paying under the existing contract seventy-one dollars and sixty-nine cents per ton for disposal of trash and we are not paying anything for the disposal of recycling. Under this new contract, we would be looking at a cost to dispose of ninety-eight dollars per ton for trash and the aggregate cost to dispose of recycling, when you take the total cost minus the revenue that you receive for the recycling products, would then, um, lend to a sixty-two dollar per ton cost to get rid of recycling. Um, the overall cost of the contract from where it is today to, um, where we are today to where we would be is an annual increase of approximately two hundred and ten thousand dollars for the disposal and collection of trash. We, they only received one bid, um, Waste Management, um, submitted a letter. They chose not to bid on the project.
Because they just can't take anymore on?
They just couldn't take anymore on. The, the, the two communities would, would be a tremendously large project and they just weren't interested in submitting a bid. Um, Casella has submitted a bid. The city of Laconia is moving forward with discussions with their city manager and their public works committee to talk about, um, accepting the proposal for the automated, um, collection. They have a different disposal arrangement. They had stayed with the co-op back when we had split from the co-op. We've had an extremely, extremely good solid waste contract for the past eight years and unfortunately, you know, going forward, we, we don't have that opportunity to maintain the same level, um, contract, um, that we have now.
Because we're a host town, are we still going to receive?
Yes, we will continue to receive host fees from Casella for any tonnage that they bring into the facility that, um, is not generated in, in Belmont. Um, to date, we've received forty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars in host fees from them, um, in twenty twenty-one. So we could anticipate, um, a similar number, um, in twenty-two. We're also working or looking to work with a company that provides grants for, um, a portion of the purchase price of the recycling carts. Um, we could estimate that based on our tonnage, um, and so forth, that we, um, recycle and the number of carts that we would need, we would probably be eligible for a grant in the amount of about thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars towards the cost of the carts. I know it's a lot to consider, um, and I know it's an, it's certainly a huge increase for next year, but I don't know that our options are going to be, um, I, I, I don't know that there is an option.
I was gonna say, there's no option.
Unfortunately, we have to get rid of our trash and, um, you know, uh, Pennard had initially, um, spoke with the city about possibly participating in the bid. They didn't submit a bid either. Um, there's a significant lead time for Casella to purchase the trucks that they need to, to accommodate this type of proposal. Um, obviously, if they don't have the trucks in time to start for January first, they're willing to work with us because they're currently our vendor and they're currently picking up our trash. Um, so they would continue to, to work with us on that.
But you're gonna be only allowed two garbage cans per household.
Unless you want to buy another one. You can buy a, a second cart, but you would be responsible for paying for it. Now, these carts are big. They're ninety-six gallon. They're not the thirty gallon carts that you currently might be putting out.
I've seen the ones in Laconia, because I went, talked to the Laconia about it because I had a, one of my tenants was complaining about it. So I went and talked to them and they showed me what the buckets were.
Yeah, they're, they're good size. So you would be able to get a second one if you chose to have it or probably even a third, but you would be paying for anything beyond the one per household. Except in a multifamily situation, if it were a multifamily unit that we were picking up, which we pick up three and under, we would give them three carts for that, that property.
The thing is, there's gonna be some controversy with a lot of people like, geez, the garbage day, you go down the road and, you know, there's, looks like the city dumped you.
That's right.
And yet, you know, this guy's got just one can or whatever. I understand that, but there's gonna be some people saying, geez, I can't get rid of all my trash. So there's.
Well, unfortunately, they can, but they'll have to buy the additional cart.
What is it, thirty-seven dollars?
Uh, I don't, uh, where was it?
Don't quote me. Oh, I just lost my place.
I, um, there was a place where they had put what the additional amount would be per cart.
But don't quote me. Yeah.
Good payback, roughly fifteen dollars.
Actually, thirty-seven doesn't sound like enough, does it?
Um, let's see, where is it?
So in, in effect, if they wanted to buy five carts.
Yes, they're a hundred and fifty dollars per cart.
So if they wanted to buy them, they're gonna pick them up?
Yep. Yep. I mean, the main, the biggest thing that we really would want to do with this program is encourage more people to recycle.
Well, if you have a cart, like just, if you have a cart and your trash is in it, what do you put your recyclers in?
Same thing. You're gonna have two carts at your home. You're gonna have one for recycling and one for trash.
Okay.
And you will put, you'll split it up into each cart. But we're gonna wanna encourage recycling because it's costing us only six, roughly sixty-two dollars to get rid of recycling tonnage versus ninety-eight dollars for trash.
Okay.
Um, and, and what this will do is it will curb the people who are driving through this community on trash day, coming from south of, of Belmont or coming from north of Belmont and just driving by a house that has their trash out on the side of the road, dropping their bag and continuing on.
Really?
Oh, it's happening. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yep, and we're not, because we don't regulate the number of bags that you put out. We just say, don't put anything larger than a thirty gallon container, but your trash doesn't have to be in that thirty gallon container. It's just that if you do put containers out, Casella has to be able to lift them by hand, um, to put them in the backs of the trucks.
I guess, what do we do? We have no choice. I mean, there's nobody else. So that just means that next year's budget, we're gonna have to, next year's budget, we're gonna have to, um, accommodate the increase in trash.
I mean, the one thing I haven't inquired about is whether or not we can create a special revenue fund for those host fees so that we could use, I mean, technically, they do offset the expense of the budget. But if we could put them into a special revenue fund so they were specifically earmarked for it, um, that might be something that we would want to consider doing so that we were putting those monies aside.
And not, and not to pick on Craig, but can you imagine these big carts sitting outside the road on a, on a snow day?
Unfortunately.
The ones in Laconia are pretty good size.
Yeah, unfortunately.
There's nothing to do.
Yeah.
And are they on wheels, I hope?
Yes, and they have the, they, they pull in and they pick them up and they dump them and put them back. I mean, if nothing else, I'm hoping it will be a little bit more neatly.
Yeah.
Organized. They're not throwing them in the middle of the road.
Well, if you, if you have to buy one, you're gonna think twice before you, uh, yeah, yeah.
And I mean, it, I don't know which is worse. If you whack a cart or you whack three bags of trash that's out there and it goes everywhere. I mean, I don't know. It's a, um.
It's a big issue no matter what you do.
It is a big issue wherever you are though. Trash is, is just, it's so difficult to get rid of trash these days. Um, the facilities just don't have the capacity, um, and you know.
Well, I noticed on social media that there's been a lot of complaints because people have gone over, um, forty and they haven't been able to leave their stuff. But they don't understand, they've met their max. Well, they had met their max.
They had. I believe it, and I don't know if they've reopened now. They should have because it was.
They couldn't take anymore because they had no place to take it because they've met their max. They had no place to take it.
Their air capacity of their, of their permit.
Yeah, yeah. Which is again, I, I don't fully understand it and I'm sure, you know, the average person probably doesn't understand that there is limitations even to them.
So over the past several years, obviously, we get complaints occasionally from residents who call to complain that, oh, they threw my barrel or they didn't pick up my barrel or, you know, those are the similar type complaints that we get. Um, I think this would curtail, obviously, a lot of that as well because they're not gonna throw the barrels. They're gonna be setting them back down.
Nobody's gonna be touching them.
If they fail, if they fail to pick up someone's household, we're gonna call, just like we do today and say, hey, you forgot the, the, you know, trash at four twenty-eight South Road and they'll be back out and they pick it up. They will go to an every other week recycling instead of every week because there is economy and scale and what they will try to do is do Laconia one week and they'll do Belmont the next week so that there's an current, you know, um, an economy of, of having those trucks.
Do you have to turn these barrels in any certain way for them to pick them up or, I mean, do they have to?
I would assume that they'll have to be a certain way so that the forks on the, the thing will lift them up. Um, I, I think the, the more, the difficult conversation we're going to have to have with our residents is, is that if we don't move forward with this, I don't know that we'll have a vendor that's going to be able to accommodate picking up our trash in the current fashion that they do because they don't have the staff.
You know, it sounds and no one can get help.
Right.
And obviously, they've gotta buy the trucks.
And yeah, that's why they're looking for.
That's why, that's the other reason it's increasing. You, you gotta pay for it somewhere. Evidently, trucks are far more important, are far more expensive than people, I guess.
If they get a backyard, they can always burn the paper and stuff. I, that's what I did after Christmas. I took one on the pasture burned all the cardboard and paper and, so you're probably gonna see a lot more of that, probably.
Don't we all remember as kids, dad having the, the can in the back door? Yeah, you're probably gonna get. I know there's a couple people around my area and they do that. Yeah.
Trash is, it's, it's, the capacity for the disposal of trash in New Hampshire is, is extremely limited. Their, Casella's been trying to get their facility and Dalton permitted. They backed off of their wetlands permit because they were getting such a hard time from the Forest Lake people up in that area. I think they are still planning to go forward, but they may be doing some type of sizing, um, adjustment to hopefully, you know, accommodate it. But, you know, otherwise they're hauling trash to Massachusetts, western Massachusetts, upstate New York. I mean, it, it's crazy.
Those places are gonna fill up. They're gonna fill up.
The contract is proposed to be five years, um, as a, as a, um, going forward. Casella will distribute the carts. They will take the broken carts and replace the broken carts if something gets broken, you know, by fault of theirs, um, so that we're not. Um, the city of Laconia is actually purchasing their carts themselves and they're gonna be storing them and distributing them. I could not even imagine putting that burden on public works staff because they would have had to have stored them at the public works department. There's no other location. They're, they're large, they're, you know, cumbersome and to expect, you know, a small department such as we have to distribute them, I just, it didn't make sense to us. I think it's, Casella owns them, they distribute them, they do what they want with them and, yeah, yeah, so.
Well, it's something we're gonna deal with anyway, no matter what.
It is. Unfortunately, um, sadly, um, it is. I mean, we knew potentially that this day was coming as we neared the, you know, and we have had an extremely good deal for, you know, eight years. We haven't paid anything to dispose of our, our recycling. It's all been taken at no cost to us. Um, and, um, we knew that there was gonna be, the, the day of reckoning was coming.
Exactly, yeah.
So, you know, and someone had mentioned, I think Alicia actually had inquired about the reality of building a facility for the transfer of trash, but I don't even think that that's a reality.
You did it twenty years ago.
You know, we did, right. And, you know, and at that point, it was, you know, fairly excessive. And then again, you gotta have more staff. And are you gonna, are you gonna tell the residents, okay, uh, we're not gonna pick your trash up anymore. You've gotta drive it to this facility. And I think most people would rather pay in their taxes and have their trash picked up than drive it to a facility.
Well, and again, not for nothing, but a lot of people don't have the availability of being able to haul their trash to a facility.
Right, right. They've gotta put it in their car or, yeah.
That's exactly right. Not everyone has a little truck or, you know, wants in the summertime to put stinky trash in the back of your car and drive it somewhere and, yeah, yeah.
So how's that other facility working as far as the trash that people can buy to put outside the road or something? You make an appointment to?
Ah, that's been going extremely well and to the best of my knowledge, that will continue.
So that was, okay, that's a good thing. So that was if you've got a couch, you call and make an appointment. Okay.
So that will continue and we would continue to get the host fees that we have been given.
They're still working well.
Yeah, that's been working very well.
Craig, let me ask you a question. Have, since we, since we started, since we started the, um, making appointment to pick your couch up, have you not?
I can't, I can't understand.
I can't hear a word you said.
I didn't understand what you said. Oh, alright, alright. Well, it was a nice thought. I, I just, I'm questioning since we started this make an appointment for someone to pick up your couch or your chair or whatever, have you noticed a decrease on the size of the road or not really any difference? Okay, alright, good. Alright.
But they're so large, I can't.
So what you, what you're concerned about is if I put a couple of cans out, a couple of these cans out to the front of the road, if I don't get out there and get them back in, somebody's gonna drive by with a pickup truck, grab it, throw it in the back of the pickup truck and keep going.
And that, that may, that may be potentially a problem, although I think they're used all over the state um, and communities everywhere with this automated collection and I, I can't imagine there's a huge, I mean.
A hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars a pop, I'll steal your can. I'll buy one, but I agree.
I, I just don't think it's gonna be a. I mean, I certainly can talk to Brian about how they would put some type of identification on them. Maybe they, maybe it can be part of the printing of the, although I don't know how they would do that.
People to put their own numbers on it.
Maybe draw their, their, write on them or something to that effect with markers or something.
Well, you know something, now that I think about that, I've seen them before and they've had numbers on them. People have put numbers on them, but again.
It's probably something you do, yeah, yeah.
Or do they have their own numbers that they say, alright, you know, this street, this house is getting number four five five?
Yeah, who knows?
Do they know?
Yeah. Hmm, alright.
So are we prepared to let them know that we would be moving forward on, okay, January? If you would do a motion and a vote, I'd appreciate that.
Okay, um, so I make a motion that we move forward with our Casella in negotiating a, um, obviously what looks like a five-year contract beginning in.
It would begin January first, twenty twenty-three. And it is for automated curbside solid waste and recycling collection, hauling and processing.
Okay. I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, do you wanna go back quickly and do the, the other information that I gave you was really just, um, an FYI um, on the property at seven fifty-two Laconia Road? So that was just to update you that the state is moving forward with those no parking signs that you had requested?
I think they're already up.
Some of them are already up.
Okay.
They, they were quick. They, I got the letter, um, from Bill, from Mr. Lambert on the fifth, which would have been last Monday. So they are moving quickly then with it.
Okay.
Okay, and. Okay. And the only other thing I had was the Conservation Commission did vote the other night to include a warrant article that would turn any of their remaining budget back to the general fund in lieu of it going into the Conservation Commission fund, and I felt that that was in line with what you had talked with them about in the past, and that you would support that as a warrant article going forward. Okay. All right, so the only thing we have then is quickly to take care of that public hearing, and then Mark is here for a non-public session with you.
All right, all right. So we have a public hearing in accordance with our, with RSA 33:8-A to take public comment on the proposed municipal bond issue slash note in the amount of $1 million to improve, for improvements to the town's wastewater pumping station.
Yes, and it's actually, the, it's aimed at the Coons Point Pumping Station as well as a new generator for the pumping station at Shaker Road. We have submitted a number of applications to DES for some help on this project. Unfortunately, it didn't score high enough to get more than the 2% forgiveness on the loan amount so that they would anticipate we would get approximately $20,000 back in, in principal forgiveness. Their interest rate program is currently at 2%. Again, this would be funded, anticipated to be funded by the sewer users. There is sufficient income in that department to support a grant or a loan of this nature, and we do have a couple of other grants that are coming off the debt schedule at this point so that we would be able to, you know, to fund this. We have, again, put in all of the pre-planning applications and so forth. Everything has gone in to DES. And they cannot, DES cannot guarantee that there'll be SRF loan funding available because we're, we scored 104 on the project list. But without the authority to go forward with this, we wouldn't be able to apply if those funds did become available, so.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this? Hearing now, we'll close to the public. And basically, what you're saying is, is that this is going to be funded through sewer user fees at this point.
Correct. This one would be funded through sewer user fees, correct.
And these are improvements to two stations, pretty much.
Right. The work includes, but may not be limited to pump, flow monitoring, and electrical improvements at the Coons Point Station and other pumping stations, and a generator replacement at the Shaker Road pumping station. Correct.
And Craig, with those two improvements, that kinda puts us back up in what we need in the sewer department as far as anything that needs to be replaced or whatever?
Correct. Please, please one, update or recommend by, by, um, the.
Generator, yeah? All right. Okay, awesome. All right. Do we, we don't, we just?
Again, your requirement was to hold the bond hearing
Aye.
to meet the requirements of the budget process. There are warrant articles proposed to go on the warrant for this. We'll have the conversation at the deliberative session, and we'll be able to go forward with those.
All right, okay. Do we have any other new business?
I do not.
Any other old business?
I do not, no. We do, again, as I said, Mark is here.
I'm a non-public, correct?
Yes, yep, so if you would.
So our next meeting will be January 24th, unless.
Well, I would like to leave, at this point, it is on the schedule. However, if you do not receive any articles that you really need to, to take up and discuss, there may not be a need for the meeting.
Otherwise, you will notify us.
I'll notify you. I'll know, I will know before the close of business tomorrow.
Okay, and you'll, you will do the proper posting and whatever is necessary. Awesome, okay. We're going to move, we're gonna close the meeting and we're gonna move into non-public Dean 91-8:3, Roman numeral 2, letter.
C, please.
C, Ro Cal.
Sunny Pat.
Ruth Mooney.
John Pike.
Code enforcement matter. Oh, yeah, it's sexy. Not a problem.